Good evening, the time being 5.30. It is my pleasure to welcome everybody who is here tonight, along with those who are watching on YouTube. My name's Paula Reet, I'm the Mayor of Kingborough. Welcome to tonight's meeting on Monday the 4th of October 2021. We don't have anyone in the public gallery this evening, but it's 5.30pm and I now officially declare the meeting open. I wish to advise that council meetings are recorded and made publicly available on our website. In accordance with council's policy, I'll ask the General Manager to confirm that the audio recording has commenced.
Confirmed.
Thank you. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, pay respects to elders past and present, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. The attendees tonight are from councillors, myself, councillor Reet, Deputy Mayor councillor Westwood, councillor Cordova, councillor Fox, councillor Gladwrit and councillor Woss. From staff this evening, we have the General Manager, Mr Arnold, the Director of Governance, Recreation and Property Services, Mr Sme, the Director of Environment Development and Community Services, Dr Stevenson, the Senior Manager of Capital Works, Mr Reed, the Media and Communications Advisor, Ms Adams, and the Executive Assistant, Mrs Morton. We have a number of apologies this evening, we have apologies from councillor Bastone, councillor Grace, councillor Midley and councillor Christians Street. Before I go on to the confirmation of minutes, just for the information of everyone in the room, we only have six councillors here this evening, which is just the minimum requirement for a quorum. So you won't be able to leave the meeting to have a comfort stop, otherwise we won't have a quorum. I'm also in the unusual situation that I had my second Covid jab today and I feel very unwell, so if for some reason I can't continue to chair the meeting, I'll hand over to the Deputy Mayor and I'll be like the character in Weekend at Bernie's that gets propped up and just raises a hand when the General Manager pulls a string or else what. So we're hoping that doesn't happen, so I'm hoping for a short, sharp meeting so that I can actually stay in the chair and make sense. If I start making not sense, somebody tell me and I will defer to the deputy. Turning now to page one, confirmation of minutes. Oh, that was fast, thank you councillor Fox. I said a fast meeting and seconded by councillor Westwood. The motion is that the minutes of the open session of council meeting number 19 held on the 20th of September 2021 be confirmed as a true record. All those in favour? Against, motion is carried unanimously. Workshops held since the last council meeting, we had a workshop last Monday evening, the 27th of September, on the Kingston CBD Structure Plan. Moving to page two, declarations of interest, does any councillor have an interest they would like to declare? No, thank you very much. Transfer of agenda items, is there any item on the agenda that a councillor would like to transfer from open into closed or vice versa? No, thank you very much. Questions without notice from the public, given there are no members of the public here, there won't be any questions. We did have questions on notice from the public and for anybody who is watching on YouTube, if they did wish to submit a question on notice, they can send it to kacey@kingborough.taz.gov.au and it will appear on the next meeting agenda with a response. Questions on notice, there was a question in relation to the Spring Farm walking track from Mr David Bain and an officer's response from Mr Sme. Question from Ms Monica Kupelweiser and an officer's response from Mr Daniel Spee in relation to the Tasmanian State Service. A question from Ms Karen Tantari of the Australian Services Union in relation to management wage freezes and an officer's response from Mr Arnold. Turning now to questions without notice from councillors, does any councillor have a question without notice? Councillor Cordova.
Thank you kindly, Mayor. My first, my question tonight is about disc golf, previously known to me as frisbee golf, but I'm now informed that it's disc golf. I recently visited Poimena Reserve in Austen's Ferry at the invitation of Hobart Disc Golf Club. Disc golf is a growing sport that's all age inclusive and relatively inexpensive in terms of infrastructure to set up, so for a nine-hole community golf course, you basically just require nine baskets and nine tee pads and the baskets there at Poimena, I think were installed in the 1990s and they're still up, so relatively inexpensive. My question is, has the council ever investigated using any of our parks and reserves as a potential area for a community course for disc golf?
Thank you. I actually know what it is because I know someone who plays it and it is a very popular and growing sport. I'm not aware that we've actually ever had any approaches for this, but I'll defer to Mr Sme.
Thank you, Mayor. We've not had an approach and it certainly hasn't come out in consultation in relation to previous sport and rec strategies that we've done. We've had ultimate frisbee played on our sports grounds before, but that is slightly different to disc golf, but certainly if there was interest from the community, that's something we could investigate.
Thanks very much. I also had a question or two about the General Manager's diary, but I'm just looking for my notes, so if it's okay to go to somebody and then come back to that.
I'll come back to you, sure. Councillor Gladwrit?
Thank you. I've had a few emails about Spanish Heath and foxglove being a weed that's becoming quite invasive in certain areas, I was just wondering how that's being tackled. Could we take, yeah? Sure. Thank you. This one probably would have to be on notice as well, I know Mr Reed isn't here, but it's to do with degradable dog poo bags. Why do we still have them, given that the FOGO is coming in and we can put pet poo in those bins now?
The issue with that is that the compostable bags can't be brought online until we've finished the current contract with the contractor and it would also come at an additional cost, so we would need to look at it at that time. There have also been some issues with, as I understand it, from the Dog Walkers Association of some studies done interstate about whether the dog poo and the compostable bags actually would get enough sun in Tasmania to break down appropriately, strangely enough.
If they were being taken to the commercial composting facilities which are heated, then presumably it would.
There's still, yeah, there's still some question mark over, as I understand the science behind that, but it's certainly something that's on our radar.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions, councillor Westwood?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first one relates to my understanding that council is having some difficulties in getting a new member of staff who happens to be a very much needed planner from mainland Australia to start in their role and that this has dragged on for some time. Can you provide some information about this, please?
I can. It certainly is correct that we have had significant issues in trying to get a person living in New South Wales who has been appointed to a permanent position, I should say, as a town planner, into Tasmania and this has actually been going on for two months now and it's much to the frustration of a number of council staff because we've made numerous appeals to the Deputy State Controller and to government ministers and to other MPs to no avail. Initially, we had to have a lengthy fight to have that person recognised as an essential traveller in category four, despite the fact that she was coming to Tasmania to take up permanent employment. Category four is the one that encompasses specialist skills critical to maintaining key industries or businesses in Tasmania and that is obviously very relevant to council. We have had to demonstrate that we weren't able to find, we'd advertised several times and we had to demonstrate that we weren't able to secure anybody who actually was a Tasmanian resident to fill the position and we were able to prove that, but when you look at the fact that last year we had essential travellers in a category which was specialist skills and they were people who were construction workers who were fitting out a pizza shop on the eastern shore who were allowed in, yet we can't get a town planner in, I am really, really frustrated about it. She now has secured that essential traveller category four, but the problem is that hotel quarantine is full. We haven't been asking for any exemptions because we don't need to, because she is prepared to come here and pay for being in hotel quarantine, we have a Covid safe plan for council, she has a place of residence and is able to give a Tasmanian address, she ticks all the boxes. Disturbingly, she's actually resigned from her previous employment and she's now completely in a vacuum, we need her here. A lot of the work that our town planners do as part of assessing development applications is actually going off on site, so we've been able to give her some limited remote training, but she needs to actually be here in the state to undertake that assessments. And here's the hilarious thing about this, the hilarious thing is, well, it's not hilarious, it's tragically hilarious. We have a shortage of planners, there's a national shortage, we're very fortunate to get her. What she's now being told because hotel quarantine is full is that every time she applies, she can't reapply for another 14 days, so it's then pop luck, so there's actually no priority list that you go on to, which is kind of like not having priority lists for surgery or something like that. So if she rings on the right day, there might be a spot for her, even though she's deemed an essential traveller and otherwise, yeah, it's just the luck of the draw. So we're very frustrated and haven't had any success and kind of hope that perhaps our friends in the media might take this up and look at how ridiculous it is, given that we have statutory obligations that we need to fulfil, there is huge pressure on our planning staff and we need to get this person here before she changes her mind and thinks it's all too hard, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm a bit worked up about that one.
Thank you. A couple of questions in relation to the Spring Farm walking track. I note that we have $207,000 from the developer paid into public open space funds, which isn't quite enough to complete the track. How much more money is estimated that we might need to complete that walking track at Spring Farm?
Mr Sme.
Through you, Mayor. Unknown at this stage, we need to complete the design and that is imminent. Once we've done the design, then we'll be able to do a costing on it, but I couldn't give a figure at this stage.
Thank you. And in terms of the planning process, is council able to submit a development application for that track while we're waiting to find out if we're successful for grant funding, for example?
Mr Sme.
Through the Chair, yes, we can, bearing in mind that the section that runs through Spring Farm still needs to be connected to Whitewater Creek Track through a block of land that council now owns. So what we are doing is the design work for that entire length and our aim is to lodge that development application for the whole length rather than have to do two separate DAs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions? No. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, just about the GM's diary, I'd just like some further information about, excuse me, on the 16th of September to discuss commercial operations and also the Mayor's Forum.
General Manager.
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Cordova, the discussion with Mr Redman was in relation to a rural property that he adjoints, which is an existing commercial operation and the specific issue was concerning a noisy generator. In relation to the Mayor's Forum?
Yeah, on the 21st, Greater Hobart Mayor's Forum.
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Cordova, that's a regular forum that's held, generally to discuss matters pertaining to either the Hobart City Deal or the Greater Hobart Act, which are both related to the four Metro Councils.
Just a follow-up, are there any good news stories out of that that are worth reporting?
Not this month. Councillor Woss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I asked to the General Manager and possibly to be taken on notice, but I'd ask for an update on proceedings in present position regarding a development application at 21 Den's Point Lane, Den's Point, please.
Mr Arnold.
Through you, Mayor. Happy to take that on notice and provide councils with a detailed response because there are a number of matters that pertain to that question.
Thank you. If there are no further questions without notice from councillors, we will move on to page 12, questions on notice from councillors. Retaining structure near the Bruny Island Boat Club from councillor Grace and an officer's response from Mr Reed. So it says page 12 on my little sheet here. Also on page four, or 12 depending on which version you're reading, we have a question on notice from councillor Grace in relation to vacant land on Bruny Island and an officer's response from Ms Maguire. The open session of council now adjourns and the planning authority commences at 5:45pm. We have a development application on page five for four multiple dwellings at 31 Lewin Avenue, Kingston, with a recommendation on page 15. Do I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Westwood, seconded by councillor Fox, councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Mayor. We have before us a development application for four detached double-storey multiple dwellings. This originally came to us in an amended form, an amended proposal and it's now coming back with amendments made by the applicant to reduce the number of dwellings from five double-storey multiple dwellings to four, thereby increasing the setback and complying with the acceptable solution and it is recommended for approval with 11 conditions.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. Any further speakers? No? If not, I will put the recommendation as printed on the screen, it has a number of conditions, is moved by councillor Westwood, seconded by councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against, motion is carried unanimously. The planning authority adjourns and the open session of council recommences at 5:47pm. Moving now to page 41, motions of which notice has been given, we have a notice of motion headed Beach Road, Kingston Beach and an officer's response from Mr Reed, it was submitted by councillor Gladwrit. Do I have a mover in councillor Gladwrit and a seconder in councillor Fox? Councillor Gladwrit.
Thank you. The recommendation for this motion is that council staff investigate road safety issues involving pedestrians crossing Beach Road at Kingston Beach and report back to council with traffic data and recommended solutions. So I'd just like to note that there is growing community concern for pedestrian safety along Beach Road. I've got a couple of things that I'd like to read out, if I may, or just choose one short one, because I guess we'll be debating this when the report comes back to council. So one of these says, "It used to be that traffic was worse at weekends, but with the rise in the number of restaurants and small businesses, allied health professionals, classes, functions at the community hall, as well as dog ownership, traffic use in Beach Road has increased quite considerably since I moved to Kingston in 2012." So this motion is seeking a report and it would be great to see what the officers have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers, councillor Cordova and then councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, I guess I'll preface the questions by saying that pedestrian safety is obviously something that's critically important and that, you know, the council holds, well, I certainly hold it as a council to the forefront of mind. Really important is to be improving active transport and to make healthy choices, easy choices, by making it easier to be mobile around our built environment, so that's just a general principle that I support, councillor Gladwrit, in the intent behind this motion. We heard previously that potentially Beach Road is supposed to be part of, I guess, a more holistic approach about improving mobility in the entire precinct, so I just have questions around, obviously noting that whenever you choose to do one thing, it comes at the expense almost of doing another thing. By focusing on Beach Road specifically, is there a risk that this is coming at the expense of doing something else to plan for the precinct as a whole? Kind of a broad question, I'm saying, is there a risk that by just focusing on Beach Road in a kind of piecemeal way, are we doing that at the expense of considering the precinct in its entirety? Will this change people's work plans in a negative way or will it be a positive way?
Sorry, you confused us all with that question, my apologies. I'm calling the Covid backs here, so, General Manager.
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Cordova, I think the simplest answer is that the officers have indicated in response to councillor Gladwrit's notice of motion that a report can be provided and the points that you've raised in the question can certainly be addressed in that response, should the council support the report.
Councillor Cordova.
That's great, thank you very much, that clarifies it. So I guess to summarise, my point of view on this is that it's a critically important issue. I have made the point that I think it really needs to be considered in concert with all of the issues about mobility around that area, because I don't want to see that one area gets precedence over another area, unless of course, there's an accurate triage that takes place where we say, well, this is in fact the area that needs the most attention for right now, so I'm really pleased to see this come before the council, I look forward to reading a report and I hope that we can take a kind of a whole of council approach to mobility in the municipality. Thanks.
Thank you. I had councillor Westwood and then councillor Fox.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you councillor Gladwrit for bringing this motion forward. It was discussed again today as part of the Kingborough Community Safety Committee and I committed to passing on their views that they are very much in support of a pedestrian crossing in this section of our municipality. As part of preparing the report, it would be good if council staff could please consider whether the pedestrian crossing could be located as close to the beach end of Beach Road as possible, because crossing between the takeaway shop and the Salty Dog is problematic and it is a popular place for people to try and cross with young children and seniors within our municipality and it is something that has been raised over a long period of time, so it is something, I agree, that the community would really like to see.
Thank you. Councillor Fox.
Yes, I also support those comments. Councillor Westwood, when I was Chair of the Access Disability Committee, this was one of the perennials that came up and was of great concern to the residents because of the car park on one side of the road and nowhere to get from that car park to where the shops are, as well as having a hall on one side of the road and no way of crossing from the hall to the other side of the road. And there are a lot of elderly people who find it difficult to get across the road when the speeding cars are coming, even though they're only doing 40, but it seems pretty fast when you're trying to get across that wide section of road. So, and it's a council car park, so I think council has a responsibility to put in some form of traffic management or calming and it was certainly included in the master plan for the Kingston Beach area that was raised by the members of that committee, so it's a saga basically and we need to deal with it. And I'm pleased we have got a disability committee now, I think there's an access committee now that might also be able to make comment in the current atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for my contribution, certainly this is something that we've discussed as the Disability Access Committee in the last few years and it was something that, like councillor Gladwrit, it was raised with me during the recent by-election and when I was travelling down through Kingston Beach on Saturday, I noticed how much traffic there was and I had to actually veer to miss somebody who was standing, holding a coffee, who was trying to get across to the hall, who had walked out quite away and I was glad that I was paying attention in the way that I was when I was driving down there. And I do recall that a few years ago when this was raised, that there was traffic data done and I think there was a large percentage of people who were actually travelling more than the 40 kilometres an hour and there was talk at the time, and I remember Mr Reed suggesting that we would put traffic calming measures in on Beach Road and yet we haven't seen anything eventuate and I think though, that in that time that we've done that, there has quite rightly been a huge growth in that area and I think I mentioned when councillor Gladwrit asked this question at a previous meeting, that one of the difficulties is that the podiatry practice that was here in central Kingston, that had their own car park, has relocated down to Kingston Beach on Beach Road. own car park, has relocated down to Kingston Beach on Beach Road, and the clients of that practice are parking across the road, and they are predominantly elderly people, and they are now having to try and get from where they're parking across the road, and a lot of them, you know, have mobility issues. So it's certainly something that I would support, and I'd like to see us look at all options. I understand there may be some issues with having it directly outside the Salty Dog and the Corners store, because then you've got two pedestrian crossings that can create within that short space. But likewise, I've also seen in places like Manly and Bondi, they actually managed to accommodate those sorts of things. So I would like to see us get a report on this and hope that, in the meantime, everybody takes care and that we don't see anybody having an accident there. So with those words, I will put the motion, and the motion is as printed on the screen.
Just make one last quick comment.
Oh, sorry, I didn't ask you to sum up. My apologies. I do that all the time. Sorry. Councillor Gladewright to sum up. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I acknowledged that the officers have given us some responses to some questions about this, and they are acknowledging that there are some challenges with pedestrian crossings in that area. So that's why we're requesting a report that they can really consider quite a few different solutions there, whether it be traffic lights or moving the bus stop or one of those pedestrian crossings that they do, for example, places like Manly where they have that whole intersection as a zebra crossing with lights, maybe not a zebra crossing, but it's a crossing area with lights so that people can go in all directions on the green light, something like that, rather than just focusing on one, yeah, little thing. So I think you understand what I mean. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will now put the motion that you've summed up. I need to write myself a note, sum up, that council staff investigate road safety issues involving pedestrians crossing Beach Road, Kingston Beach, and report back to council with traffic data and recommended solutions. It was moved by councillor Gladewright and seconded by councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. We move now to page 41. It is a notice of motion headed Council Caretaker Period Arrangements. It was submitted by councillor Westwood. There's an officer's response from Mr Arnold. I have a mover, I assume, in councillor Westwood, a seconder, councillor Fox, just beta, councillor Westwood.
Thank you, Mayor. This notice of motion is in regards to a council caretaker period. At a state and federal government level, before, immediately before the election of a new government, there is what's called a caretaker period. And this means that the government of the day, for a period of however long, cannot make any major policy decisions that will bind an incoming government. Local government in Tasmania doesn't have any provisions similar to this. It is something that is on the radar of the local government association and the state government, although we haven't seen a lot of progress in this area to date. So my notice of motion proposes that council officers prepare a report to address the introduction of caretaker conventions to guide the actions of Kingborough's elected representatives and council staff in a caretaker role during the period of a declared local government election, including by-elections. So that would be, I think, roughly the six-week period immediately before the declaration of the, immediately before, yeah, the declaration of the polls. So roughly a six-week period, which would ensure that the business of local government, including ordinary matters of administration and service delivery, should continue, but no major decisions should be made during this period. And I've listed some examples, which are significant appointments, major policy decisions that are likely to commit an incoming council or limit its freedom to act, entering into major contracts or agreements, and the publication or distribution of election material. Adding to that, one thing that I missed, that the state government has also flagged, is limiting the use of council resources to promote or support candidates, including advertising by council that might give an advantage to one candidate over potentially candidates who are not currently on the council. So I think this is something in terms of good governance. It would be good for us to lead the way in Tasmania and have our own council election period provisions. And I would urge my colleagues to support us receiving a report from staff on this.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. Councillor Fox.
Well, although I've seconded this report, it does make me feel a bit uneasy because I can't find the exact wording, but in terms of the ongoing work that council has to do, includes significant appointments and entering into major contracts and agreements. So it's to me that those two don't match. If we have made decisions, we're expecting to appoint major members of staff, or we are in the middle of a contract and we need to go ahead with that contract, six weeks is a long time in local government, especially when it comes to major contracts, especially when they're tied down to the seasonal changes where there's only one opportunity in a year, for example, to go ahead with a certain project. So those two issues are of major concern to me. I do agree with not making major policy decisions that commit an incoming council, and also publications or distribution of electoral material. I agree with those two issues. And I'm wondering also whether this policy would apply if there was an extraordinary election like we've just had, which I think would really throw the cat amongst the pigeon and unbalance our council. So, but I look forward to the report from council, from staff.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Councillor Gladewright.
Thank you. I just note that we're not actually making a decision on that subject tonight. We're just voting on whether or not we'll get the report. So I look forward to having a look at the report, which I guess will detail some of these things in more detail.
Thank you. Councillor Wos.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll speak against the motion. I believe getting the report is going to just add to staff's work. If the state government is looking at changing the Act, then that's fine. That's the time that we need to become involved. State and federal governments have a caretaker mode because they call the election, and knowing that the election could change the colours of the jumpers after. So henceforth, they are unable to make commitments, which is fine. In local government at this stage, the timeframe is set. If you have a look at your election material from the last election, you've been told that you are elected until October 2022. So if that being the case, if you're only going to be elected until September 2022, does that require a mass resignation? Does it require that we all walk out and a commissioner is appointed? Does it mean that there is no allowance payable for those last six or eight months? The mover of the motion talks about significant appointments, but has made no recommendation to what a significant appointment is. Now, a significant appointment could be a new planner, could be a new engineer. The general manager has authority to do that now, but if that authority is taken away from the general manager, then, as councillor Fox quite rightly said, chaos is about to set in. Making major policy decisions, bearing in mind with local government and a council of ten, you would expect perhaps around eight would be returned at each election, give or take. Those people who are facing an election at that time, up until that election mode, have all the information readily available to them, possibly on some items for two or three years past. A new council with one or two new members to make a decision two weeks after they are elected, I think would create a utter confusion to those members and unstabilise the decision-making. Certainly, council could now, if a recommendation came before it, and it was something that could be held off, council of today has the power to defer that item to a later stage. The report also says that the caretaker convention should apply to elected members and council staff. Where do we draw the line and when do we stop? If we're going to stop doing work, does that mean we pay staff to come and do nothing? Or what do we do? And as I said in my opening remarks, if the local, if the state government is looking at it with the Local Government Act tampering or changing, that's fine, that's not an issue. But I believe that we should wait any proposed changes, and then we have an opportunity to add weight, to oppose, to make recommendations for changes. The other councils around the state, if they don't follow suit, and we were to do it, I think at the end of the day, we'd have egg on our face, and I think the Eorn Valley Council would enlarge its regional area. So I'll speak against it.
Thank you, councillor Wos. Councillor Gladewright, I mean councillor Cordova.
Thank you, Mayor. I think councillor Wos has raised some really interesting points, but I really want to thank councillor Westwood for bringing this motion. I think it's a really healthy discussion to be having. A couple of questions, and I think some of the questions that councillor Wos raised, perhaps rhetorically, might be answered in the subject of the report, like that might be teased out, and I'm happy to see those unpacked. However, I do feel like it is quite a complex area, and to do a report justice would take a fairly significant amount of council staff time and potential resources. My question is, is there an impetus, or was there a specific example of a decision that has been made either here in Kingborough or really anywhere in Tasmania that has kind of motivated this motion to come before the council? Are there specific things that we're concerned about that happened last time because, or not even last time, any time historically, because of a caretaker period? Am I allowed to ask that question of the mover of the motion?
General manager's happy to answer that.
Through you, Mayor. I think that one thing that does come to mind is that at the last local government election, 2018 election for Kingborough, there was a request made to distribute flyers for candidates at a work site of this organisation. I don't believe that's appropriate. A caretaker policy could address that. That is one example that springs to mind. I attended a session during the legislative review of the current state government, and the discussion was around a caretaker policy, and a number of other councils raised similar issues, both elected representatives and general managers that were present at that forum. I think there are a number of grey areas. I think the appointment of a general manager during a local government election period, let's say, for example, the council meeting, the very last council meeting of a council, any council in the state, is arguably problematic. So there's a couple of examples to answer your question, councillor Cordova.
That's very helpful. Thank you so much, through you, Mayor. I think, yeah, we're teasing out whether or not there's a need, and that's really my first and overarching question. And because I was quite convinced by what councillor Wos was kind of alluding to, that potentially it would be, if it's a six-week caretaker period, that would be three meetings essentially where you could only really do the basics. And that's quite significant, and I think the community expects us to keep the ball rolling. Another quick question, did the local government review that has recently been undertaken by the state government, did that make any recommendations in this sphere, or is it just kind of talk around the councils?
Dr Stevenson. Yes, so Legate identified in their original submission that there was an increasing level of feedback from councils in support of a caretaker provisions, and ultimately the government recommendations, which they agreed they would progress in the Act review, included a caretaker provision. I haven't got the detail in front of me, but it was, it was similar, it was around policy decisions, significant appointments. And it was from memory from the time the candidates were able to nominate. The, I guess, the unanswered question at the moment is the timeframe of the Local Government Act review because of the overlap with, now with the Local Government Structural Reform agenda.
Thank you. Well, just to finish my thoughts, Mayor, on this subject, is that I feel like the actual definitions of what counts as a major decision or what counts as a significant appointment can be brought out in a report. And so I think that will be interesting to see, but I do acknowledge that this is a significant undertaking in order to provide a really fair and balanced report. I actually like that Kingborough council often leads the way, whether it's about CAT management, and hopefully soon about climate change. And I like the idea that council can kind of lead the way and make a move on this even before some of the other councils around Tasmania. Having said all that, I absolutely, you know, reserve my right, as we all do, of course, to, you know, consider the report based on its merits at the time that it comes before us, and taking in mind all of what councillor Wos raised, which I thought were all good points. So with that, yeah, I like the way that council's leading the way. I thank councillor Westwood for bringing this to us, and I'll be voting for the report to be made. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Cordova. Councillor Gladewright, have you got a question? Just a quick one. Who will be writing the report? I suspect it'll be Dr Stevenson. No, Mr?
That was said with great enthusiasm, I hope you note. Just for my contribution before I ask councillor Westwood to sum up, I think there is a need for some form of caretaker provisions. I wasn't aware when I made the move from state government to local government that that actually wasn't the case. So I was quite surprised that at the following election that I was involved in in 2014, that we just kept doing the business right up until basically election day and then picked up again. So it is quite a unique situation, but a lot of the things do require some definition, as already been pointed out. I find the concept of it, including by-elections, I do have some difficulty with that, because that would effectively mean that in the recent by-election only three months ago, that even though there were only two positions available, that we would have a bit of a stop work, if you like, on everything else. So if you think about the things that we did during that period of time, that would all halt. So I think there would need to be some special consideration of what, you know, what level of by-election is. If it's half, half the people have gone for some reason, then I think it could be justified. But if it's only one or two positions, I would have some difficulty in doing that, because then you end up with the scenario that we've just talked about, where we could effectively stop work for six weeks and we would have just done it in a by-election. So then there's 12 weeks in the space of 15 months where we have kind of parked things, and then we're going to have a backlog. So, but hopefully there are ways to consider to work around that. I guess that's just a nuance of local government, because that, in state government, things don't stop for a by-election of just one person or two people. So, but I think it's a really important discussion that we have to have. We, you might note that we do have the Minister for Local Government coming to see us in November. He's requested to come and see council at a workshop, so I think that's probably a great opportunity to raise this with them and see whether it is on their radar in a timely way. So, having said that, councillor Westwood, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to say thank you to everyone for raising some really great points. One of the things I love about our council is that we can have really respectful decisions, discussions with diverse views, and certainly some of the things raised, I hope, will be covered in the report.
Thank you. So the motion, as printed on the screen, that council officers prepare a report to address the introduction of caretaker conventions to guide the actions of Kingborough's elected representatives and council staff in a caretaker role during the period of a declared local government election, including by-elections, it's moved by councillor Westwood and seconded by councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? We'll have a show of hands. Those in favour is councillors Cordova, Gladewright, Fox, Westwood and Reet, and those against, councillor Wos. The motion is carried. Staying now on page, no, going over to page 42, we have petitions still being actioned. There are no petitions currently still being actioned, and there were moving to petitions received in the last period at the time the agenda was compiled. No petitions were received. Turning now to page 43, under Officers' Reports to Council, we have the Margate Rivulet Hydraulic Assessment, with a recommendation on page 46.
So moved.
Moved. Thank you, councillor Cordova. Seconded councillor Fox. Councillor Cordova. Moved. Thank you councillor Cordova, seconded councillor Fox. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, ma'am. And it's rather an auspicious time to be moving this since we've been recently inundated with rain. This is a really interesting Margate Rivulet hydraulic assessment. A bit of background is that the Margate Rivulet is a major water course in the Margate hinterland. The catchment is largely undeveloped with most of the urban development occurring in the lower part of the catchment in and around Margate Township. There is a risk however, that future development might encroach on that flood plain and natural waterways and therefore it's a good idea to have this report before us. Basically, we engaged cardo engineering to undertake a Margate Rivulet hydraulic assessment to provide flood intelligence for current and future climate conditions. It's a fascinating report and I particularly enjoyed, well, not enjoyed, I mean, I found it really interesting to see all of the images from the 1973 flood and the more recent ones as well. Basically, this intelligence gives us the capacity to make sensible planning decisions. And also the results indicate that there are indeed three flood risk hotspots. For example, the walking track along Margate Rivulet upstream of the Channel Highway, sections of Van Mori Road and the walking track along Narina Creek. There are ways that we can mitigate the erosion that's starting to form there. There are some things to be mindful in terms of the intensification of developments in the lower regions of, of the catchment to be, to be mindful about that. And there's a bunch of recommendations about preventative maintenance that can be done, utilizing planning controls, working with the state government to upgrade the Channel Highway Bridge to increase its capacity, upgrading culverts and so on. I did have a question, but I'm not sure who might be able to answer it, but it is about 6.1. If we draw our attention on page 45, it says under environment 6.1, that natural values that are potentially at risk from extreme weather events and climate change within the Margate Rivulet catchment have not been addressed specifically as part of this study. And so I guess my question is, the hydraulic modelling report itself is, is really, really useful and I can see all of the reasons why it's useful. But will we be doing a separate study or separate investigation into those, into the natural values that are potentially at risk because of climate change in this catchment?
Thank you. Mr Reed, can you help us with that? Turn on the side first. That's it. Thank you.
Through you, Mr Ma'am. I'm probably unable to provide a definitive answer on that one. You can take it on notice, but I would suggest that the, I guess, the natural values in question would certainly need to be looked at as far as what mitigation measures might come out of the flood study. But in relation to climate change more generally, flood studies aside and climate change, I think, yeah, that's certainly an area that needs further deliberation as to how it might be impacted.
Thank you councillor Cordova.
Another question, just about in terms of the implementation aspect of this. What, what do council staff see as being kind of the, the most important take home messages about what needs to be done first and how much in the way of resourcing needs to be put towards this based on, on findings of the hydraulic report?
Mr Reed.
Through you, ma'am. Again, we can take that one on notice, other than probably just to identify that a lot of the planning controls that are identified in the report, certainly from a longer term perspective, are generally the, the most appropriate mechanisms to address in the first instance. And a lot of the other reactive type solutions that come out of those reports effectively is on a funding basis, which again can be prioritized based on best value for money and cost benefit analysis. But certainly the planning aspects of these studies are very critical in implementation.
Thank you, ma'am. Just to finalize my contribution by saying that the, the flood maps that are incorporated in this, in this report, there's a range of design flood maps for the Margate Rivulet catchment for 5%, 1% and 0.5% AEP events. So that's essentially the kind of once in 200 year type thing or the once in 20 year or the once in 100 year type event. Of course, the, the refrain that you'll hear from me a lot is that as a result of anthropogenic climate change, we are seeing intensification in storm events. I've certainly, in my time in Kingborough, lived through a whole lot of them and it's, it's much to my chagrin that we, we anticipate to see more. But I'm really pleased that council is kind of taking the bull by the horns and, and investing adequately in, in these kinds of studies in order to get the recommendations that we need to prepare ourselves and our community to be safe and also to prevent, you know, the significant property damage that we regularly see as a result of flooding events. And I guess it's, it behoves us as councillors to, to remember that these are just the, the recommendations. It's up to us to resource the implementation. So that's the next step. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you councillor Cordova. Councillor Fox?
Yes, I think it's wonderful that this report's been written. It will really help us in planning for this area and as we're growing, and it is a growing area. I guess I'm, I was a bit concerned when I read the report that what they, that they are already recommending mitigation measures like, for example, a levy up near the units just above the bridge. And I'm pleased to see item C there that we further investigate this type of thing because it always has a huge impact on properties above and below the properties that you're protecting when you put in these levies. When those units were built, I was, I voted against it and I felt that this was in a flood prone area. But council was unable to refuse it because we hadn't done this study. So, and the same situations occurred in Browns River. So I think it's really timely that we have done it and I think it's wonderful that staff have put the money and the effort into this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fox. Councillor Wass?
Thank you, ma'am. When we had a climate change hub, we actually spoke about flood and sea level rise. And we were informed then that there were a number of actions that council should take to mitigate such circumstances. I don't believe we've made any changes or any representations to changing of the planning scheme. But where are we now with that climate change hub advice? Are we intending to pursue those issues? And I know that's probably not fair on the general manager's.
We don't have Mr Dool here, so.
Yeah, through you, ma'am. Councillor Wass. We do have a workshop coming up that will address some of, some of the matters that you're just referring to. And I know Mr Dool, who was one of the inaugural members of the Climate Change Hub, has endeavored to make sure that that work is not lost. And I suspect that what's currently not written into our climate change adaptation policy, for example, will be forefront of his mind at the moment.
Thank you. And if I can continue, ma'am?
Thank you.
I believe we need to undertake the modelling because there are people living in that area now. And councillor Fox is right, there were a number of us back in those days when that DA was talked about that can recall when that was last flooded. And yet council did not have the means to stop that development. A similar one at Terranaki in Snook. And to give him credit, councillor Grace also spoke against that because as a knee high to a grasshopper young child, councillor Grace can remember when that area was in fact flooded, the bridge was washed away and it created a lot of issues. But again, as council, we did not have, and to this date, as I understand, do not have the power to stop or to mitigate such circumstances. The climate change hub advice that we got from our legal man suggested there were, I think, nine or 11 legal actions that were necessary for council going forward. To safeguard council, because what happens when a house is washed away in a flood? And if someone has bought that property not knowing or realizing that it was a flood plain? And I guess you could say that at Margate where this report's done, the chances are that might only occur once in 100 years. But it might also happen three times in three years. So that's the reality that we face today. And as I said, I believe that we are obligated, not only for Margate, but for all the other areas. Now, we are aware of Snook, we are aware of Blackmans Bay, we are aware of other areas throughout our municipality. And I think that we need to look at this very seriously and very quickly because what we have to do is that we have to mitigate such events arising so that at the DA, we are able to say no convincingly or alternatively for the developer to provide, in this case, a levy that would ensure more safety. I don't believe it's right that council has to come in at the 11th hour to address an issue when had things gone our way, if you like, some present time ago, i.e. if we knew then what we know now. The developer would have been faced with making a decision as to whether to develop that land and if so, to provide such mitigation actions. So I do support it, it needs to be done, but I really believe going forward with the amount of dollars that we're going to be required to pay over years to do similar in other areas, that we need to seriously change our planning scheme, seek authority, work with the state government, we need to get them on board and going forward. And I think at some time in the future, we have to, if you like, walk away and I'm not thinking of this particular one, I'm thinking sea level rise, to walk away and retreat. But we need to have the government on side because we're not the only municipality that suffers. And I think it's a whole of testimonial approach. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you councillor Wass. Councillor Cordova, did you want to sum up?
Thank you, ma'am. Very briefly, just to say that this has been a good discussion and it's really valuable to learn from, you know, to learn about the lived experience of so many people in our municipality and indeed the councillors too. And those, those memories are very important for us to learn from those experiences and, and try and craft the municipality in such a way as we mitigate some of the risk. And also, of course, the point that councillor Wass raised about, and I'm paraphrasing, of course, that, you know, essentially paying for those infrastructure, paying for the levies and things like that. As a council, we should either have the planning capacity to say, well, no, that's an inappropriate place. Or of course, as councillor Westwood has raised a number of times, that there should be developer contribution charges that adequately offset those kind of risks. Because at the end of the day, it really shouldn't be the rate payers having to stump up for, for a levy here or some kind of new bridge there if indeed the developer had the tools at their disposal and the information provided to them by council as this hydraulic report allows. So I think, you know, it sparks off a really important conversation about developer contribution charges. But we as the council require these tools at our disposal, having the information at our fingertips to be able to share with the community, share with developers, so that everybody is operating from a point of informed, informed choice. And that way the rate payers won't get stumped with, with these, with these costs. So thank you to the author and the authorizer of this report. It's, it's really valuable information and, and I look forward to the implementation phase. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Cordova. So I'll put the motion now in relation to Margate Rivulet hydraulic assessment. It is, I won't read the motion out, it's got three parts. It was moved by councillor Cordova, seconded by councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried unanimously. We turn now to page 191. It is the annual plan for 2021-22 with a recommendation on page 192. Do I have a mover please? Thank you councillor Cordova and seconded by councillor Glade. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you, ma'am. We have before us the, the annual plan and it's, I think, a very well structured and informative plan. And it's got all kinds of interesting information in it about where we plan to go forward from here. And of course, the framework that it recommends. It's really a, a means of, I guess, holding the, the council accountable. So we're going to have the annual report later on. And, and basically these are the, you know, the measures and the mechanisms that we use. We, we have the plan here and then we work towards it and then we see how we're going later throughout the year with the, with the annual, with the annual report when that comes and all of the, all of the relevant financial reporting that goes along with that. Council strategic plan is, is a really important document and there have been all kinds of highlights that I think are worth mentioning. And I'm sure other councils will do the same. But of course, you know, I'm personally very excited about FOGO and how that's playing out. I think it's really exciting that we're still, you know, helping our community flourish by encouraging the hub activation and things like that. Of course, I think there's more work to be done in terms of youth engagement, making sure that there's adequate resources for the young people of Kingborough. And to make sure that we, you know, in light of COVID, it's been such a difficult time for so many people. And really now it is about community resilience and bringing community back together in a time where we've all been so fractured and dislocated. And council plays an enormously important role in bringing community back together during these difficult times. I'd also point out that transforming Kingston is something that is really exciting. And there's, as you can see in the report on page 205, I'll draw our attention to these very good looking computer renditions of what Kingston is set to look like. Council has so much to offer and it does such good work. There's always more work to be done and there's always things that we can improve. But this annual plan is a great starting point for members of the community to take a look at, see what we're planning, see what we're doing and also to have their engagement too and get in touch with us and let us know how they feel about it. I'll give this opportunity to just ask if, if any of the staff want to make any, I'll find a specific question about what, what, what's the most exciting thing, do you think, in this report?
That's a bit of a subjective question, I would have thought. If I was the speaker of the House of Assembly, I'd say that's seeking an opinion.
Well, in that case, I will just, I'll conclude my comments by saying thank you so much for organizing all of this. And I, I really welcome community feedback and I'd be personally very interested to hear what the community thinks about this annual plan 2021-22. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Glade.
Thank you. And thanks councillor Cordova for moving the motion so wonderfully. I just had a question about the education campaigns for the FOGO rollout. I was just wondering what was involved with those, what they're going to look like.
So there's been a series of Facebook posts, there's been some brochures that have been printed. There was a video that I did and the Mercury were actually going to cover the story. They were very enthusiastic and sent a photographer down and it's never appeared. And that was quite a few weeks ago. So there has been quite a bit. It's been front and centre on our Facebook page as well. And I think, you know, most of us as councillors have been sharing it on our own pages as well. So although I found even when I did a further post about it last week, a few people said, oh, I didn't realize I could get a bin or a caddy. So we still, we will still continue to push out those messages. And I think once, yeah, people start to talk amongst themselves, once they've got their caddies and they're using them, which they can do from this week onwards, hopefully that will then prompt some more requests.
I was more specifically wondering if there was any sort of educational piece about the benefits of composting organic material.
So in the materials that we put out, that has been included. It includes, you know, why, why do we need to prevent food scraps from going to landfill? To reduce overall landfill, but also there has been a lot of information given to them about what goes in there importantly, so that we don't end up with contaminated waste. And I think what's quite unique to us, because I've heard people who live within the Herbert City Council, their caddies don't have those things printed on the, the top of them. So they're a good sort of prompt to, to remind people what can go in there and what can't.
Thank you. And I also just wanted to echo what councillor Cordova was saying about, I feel like there's a little bit of a lack in this plan regarding the teenage age group of our municipality. There's a lot about playgrounds, but I just feel we could maybe boost up that, what we can do in that area. I don't know, we've had some brief discussions.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Look, I'll just briefly speak on this. I think I echo what councillor Cordova has said that when we last put together our strategic plan in 2019, we didn't actually realize that, that COVID was going to be around the corner and we've been very fortunate a year later now that we probably as a, a council came through it financially better than we had anticipated, even though we did have quite a few challenges. But thankfully that has enabled us to continue to support our community in the many ways that we do through different things. But I think it probably showed, going through that pandemic probably showed more than ever that the, the central vision that we put in place in the strategic plan about putting the, the community being at the heart of everything we do is more important than ever. And I think, you know, maybe we had a bit of a crystal ball moment when we wrote that in there on the eve of a pandemic because it's certainly said to me that we need to be connecting our communities more, not just physically, but, you know, emotionally as well and that we all work together. And I think the thing that is, is good about our annual plan is that it, it shows the community that we're doing everything for a reason and that we, there is thought behind. We're not just randomly doing things that come up as a good idea, but that there's a strategic plan and that every year we have a work plan that. and that every year we have a work plan that underlies that and the different areas, you know, put forward, their key projects for the following year. And that way we're accountable to the community and that's part of good governance and transparency. And so I think that we're fortunate that we've, as I said, that we've come through as we have. There are, this is not a finite list. This is the focus of things for the following year. And yes, I certainly agree with you. We need to have more conversations and things about what can we provide for our older children, our teens, teenagers and adolescents. But, you know, those conversations will start to happen in the near future anyway, once we have the staff that can undertake those in terms of community engagement. So, yeah, I'm very happy to endorse the plan. And thank you to the staff who've put in all the work on this and particularly thanks to Mrs Morton because she has the job of pulling it all together and I've seen her being very busy out there for many days, making sure that it actually is a very attractive document for us to show to our community. It's got some great photos of parts of the community as well. So I thank Mrs Morton for that. Councillor Cordova, did you want to sum up?
Thank you, mayor. Before I sum up, can I just ask two more questions or is now have I exhausted my?
You've lost that opportunity. I'm sorry.
Well, in that case, I will just sum up by saying that there are some important points here and as the community goes through it, they will, I hope, identify some of the areas that are really important to them. So for me, for example, in the public health statement on page 214, talking about smoke-free areas and the smoke-free CBD and where that's at. Similarly, significant tree register and hopefully putting in a street tree strategy with that. There are so many good things in the plan and you can see across the range of programs that council has going, the projects and programs, that there are some really exciting things to come, particularly leading with CAT management and things like that, some great environmental programs as well. I would like to echo the thanks to the staff who were involved in putting it together. And I think that I welcome the next phase where people can now discuss it and bring their feedback to councillors. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you councillor Cordova. I'll put the motion that's printed on the screen. It was moved by councillor Cordova, seconded by councillor Gladewright. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Confirmation of items to be dealt with in closed session. In accordance with Regulation 15, the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2015, council by absolute majority, moving to closed session to consider the following items: confirmation of minutes, applications for leave of absence and 98 Beach Road, Kingston, proposed lease to Rain and Horn. Could I have a mover in a second please? Moved councillor Gladewright, seconded councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried unanimously. In accordance with the Kingborough Council meeting's audio